One, you're live.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this public meeting with the Trent Hills Council for Tuesday, November the 2nd, 2021. I'll call a meeting to order, and this public meeting, public hearings meeting is being held by electronic participation pursuant to the municipality's procedural bylaw number 2021-040 on section 238 subsection 3.1 of the municipal act 2001 as amended. The meeting will be livestreamed on the municipality's meeting portal and YouTube channel. The video recording will be uploaded to the municipality at Trent Hills website following the meeting. We have approval of the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda for the public hearings, public meetings, meeting of Tuesday, November the 2nd, 2021, be received and approved. Can I get a mover and seconder for that, please? Moved by Kathy, seconded by Rick. Do you call a question, please, Doug?
Counselor Redden?
Yes.
Counselor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Bratney? Oh, you're on mute, counselor? Still on mute? If you want to get, if you're in favor, a thumbs up will work. Thank you, sir. Counselor English?
Yes.
Counselor Kelleher McClellan is absent. Deputy Mayor Metcalf?
Yes.
Mayor Creighton?
Yes.
Carried by six, your worship.
Thank you very much. Is there any disclosure of interest? Seeing none, should anything arise, please advise a clerk. These public hearings and public meetings are being held in accordance with the provisions of the planning act. The purpose of the meeting is for council members to formally hear and receive public and agency comments. The intent of these statutory public hearings and public meetings is to receive public feedback and incorporate it into a recommendation report from staff. No decisions will be made during this meeting. Please be advised, the meeting is being recorded for the purposes of creating a public record. Any property owner may file an application under the planning act relating to their property. The purpose of the public process in filing an application is to determine if the proposal is supported by local and provincial land use policies. The process also seeks public input in order to determine if any issues identified have been or can be addressed. The applicant or applicants or agents will be given an opportunity to speak on behalf of their submissions and to respond to questions arising from the discussion of these applications. Interested members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition to the application being dealt with at this meeting, hearing or meeting. All persons addressing council must state their full name and address and must direct their comments through the chair. Any information you provide at a public hearing, public meeting may be disclosed in a public record. If you missed the live meeting, have technical issues, or prefer to submit comments following the public hearing, you may email your comments to planning@trenthills.ca. That's all lowercase, planning@trenthills.ca. The municipality requires these comments no later than seven days after this meeting to ensure the comments can be reviewed by planning staff prior to preparing a final recommendation report to be heard at a future council meeting. As a reminder to individuals attending the meeting, please turn off your video and mute your microphone until staff have concluded presenting the application you wish to speak to. Turn on your video when you wish to speak to the application to ensure you are visible to the chair. Unmute your microphone when you are speaking. Once your items are completed, you may leave the meeting. If you're also watching the livestream and have unmuted your microphone to speak, please close the livestream browser window as there will be an audio feedback that will cause a delayed echo effect. Thank you. The first severance consent application is B49-2021 and zoning amendment application C27-2021 for Dez and Kim Coniker, 561 Concession Road 3 West, concession 3, part of lot 6, former township of Percy. Sadie, are you taking the lead on these?
I'm just going to do the PowerPoint, and I'll be speaking to the applications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Jim.
As you noted, these are the public hearings, public meetings for November 2nd, 2021, and I note that all matters have been circulated according to the planning act. As you noted, first up, severance consent application B49-2021, zoning amendment application C27-2021 by Dez and Kim Coniker, property located concession 3, part of lot 6, 561 Concession Road 3 West, former township of Percy.
Yeah, click, so mute is on, click start video, just to...
This is severance consent application B49-2021. It proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately seven acres of vacant land from approximately 36.6 acres for residential building purposes. The retained portion being approximately 29.6 acres contains the existing residential dwelling and outbuilding. Zoning amendment application C27-2021 has been submitted in conjunction with this application. Subsequent to severance consent application B49-2021, the purpose and effect of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is to recognize the creation of one new parcel, being the severed portion from application B49-2021, which is the seven acres of vacant land. Current zoning on the subject lands is rural, environmental protection, and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning for severance consent application B49-2021 will be rural, residential, and environmental protection. The proposed zoning for the retained portion, being approximately 29.6 acres, which contains the existing residential dwelling and outbuilding, will remain rural, environmental protection, and environmentally sensitive. All environmental protection and environmentally sensitive zoning will remain in place. Official plan designation in the area is rural, greenlands, primary and secondary mineral aggregate. Current zoning, as noted, is rural, environmentally sensitive, and environmental protection. Comments have been received from Neil Allison, the manager of Roads and Urban Services, and Lower Trent Conservation, and those comments were included in the agenda package for council. This is a depiction of the lot that's proposed to be created. Those are the comments, Mr. Mayor, and we're prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I see that Mr. Coniker is with us on the call. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Coniker?
Only that I have concerns about the request from Lower Trent Conservation Survey, and if that's the case, I'd rather reduce the size of the proposed law from seven acres to about four acres, so that the runoff area that is the Lower Trent Conservation Authority will not be part of this proposed severance.
Thank you. Jim, do you, can you speak to that?
Certainly. So the comments from Lower Trent Conservation, as noted, Mr. Mayor, are, first of all, the policies don't support new lot lines going through the future, so that would be something we have to address, and as Mr. Coniker noted, we could do that by reducing the size of the lot. There's also the 120-meter buffer around the drainage course, which could be dealt with by adjusting the property line. So we'll receive the comments here tonight and work with the applicant to, to make sure that it fits within the policy requirements of the growth plan.
Thank you very much. Does counsel, Mr. Coniker, you seem to be speaking, but you're, you must be muted.
I'm not speaking.
Okay.
I'm speechless.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Thank you. Is there anyone present with this meeting tonight that has any questions about this application? All right, then, Mr. Coniker, I would, I would suggest that you get in touch with Jim at the planning department and discuss any changes you wish to make before this goes forward.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll say goodbye.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
We are now at severance consent application B50-2021 and B51-2021, zoning amendment application C28-2021 for John Robinson at 115 Goucher Road, Beaver Road, concession 3, part of lot 3, former township of Seymour. Jim?
Yes, as you've noted, Mr. Mayor, this is severance consent applications for B50 and B51 2021, and zoning amendment application C28-2021. The public hearing to consider these applications by John Robinson, lands located concession 3, part of lot 3, at 115 Goucher Road, Beaver Road, former township of Seymour. Severance consent application B50-2021 proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately two acres of vacant land from approximately 84.42 acres for residential building purposes. Severance consent application B51-2021 proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 3.5 acres of vacant land from approximately 84.42 acres for residential building purposes. The retained portion, being approximately 78.92 acres, contains the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings. Zoning amendment application C28-2021 has been submitted in conjunction with these applications. Subsequent to severance consent applications, B50 and B51-2021, purpose and effect of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is to recognize the creation of two new parcels, being the severed portion, severance consent, B50, which is two acres, and B51, which is 3.5 acres, their vacant land. Current zoning is, on the subject lands, is rural, environmental protection, and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning for severance consent applications, B50 and B51, will be rural, residential, environmental protection, and environmentally sensitive. The zoning for the retained portion being approximately 78.92 acres, which contain the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings, will remain rural, environmental protection, and environmentally sensitive. All environmental protection and environmentally sensitive zoning will remain in place. Official plan designation is rural and greenlands. Current zoning is rural, environmentally sensitive, and environmental protection. Comments were received from Neil Allison, manager of Roads and Urban Services, Lower Trent Conservation, and public comments were received by, from Rebecca and Keith Wallace. Those were contained in the agenda package. This photo shows the parcels that are proposed and the retained lands. Just to add, Mr. Mayor, that along with these applications, there was a environmental impact study submitted to address the water course and the buffer around it through the lands, and the proposed lots follow lands outside those buffer areas.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Robinson with us tonight? I don't see him. Okay. Are there any questions from council? Ken?
Thank you, your worship. I just noticed that those comments have to relate to farming, and I'm assuming that the setbacks between the proposed lot where residential building was built and the current farmer operation, that there'll be nothing that will interfere with the farmer's right to continue operating?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We will double-check the minimum distance separation formula, but the setbacks appear to be adequate at this point. But before we bring anything back to council, we'll make sure that that has been covered off.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Is there anyone joining us tonight that would like to speak to this application?
Yes, it's Rebecca Wallace speaking.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering what's going to happen with the creek that used to carry the runoff to Myersburg Creek. It's not, it seems to be blocked down to the south end because there's a huge swamp created, and it wasn't like that three years ago. We've lived here for 21 years, and it's never been like that. So what happens then if somebody builds and it gets blocked further? We rent the land to the northwest of this. It's going to be flooded even more than it is in the spring.
Jim?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we will check with the conservation authority. They certainly did not identify, or I'll check in their comments, but I believe that the buffer area identified does support any flood plain around the water course. They may be aware of what's happening with it, or perhaps the landowner is, so we'll check and see if there's beaver damming going on or anything like that. That is usually the most natural cause, but basically with water courses that are there, they fluctuate through the years and change, but we certainly can look into what may have changed with it. But the whole idea of doing the environmental impact study is to make sure that the creek is left, the buffer is left, and the natural vegetation zone of 30 meters is in place. So we'll try and get some answers from the conservation authority for, for the Wallaces.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wallace. Anyone else wish to comment? Thank you. We will carry on. Severance consent application B52-2021 from George and Francis Benigos, 2686 11th Line East, 11th Line East, concession 11, part of lot 21, plan 51, part 4, concession 11, part of lot 21, plan 51, part 5, former township of Seymour. James?
Mr. Mayor, this is actually a technical severance, C50, or I think it should be B, but so we have, these two parcels were joined under one ownership, and so because we go through the comments, you'll see that to a greater degree.
Thank you very much.
Yep, so severance consent application B52-2021, as I noted, is for technical severance to recreate two separate parcels, which have merged in title under the name of the applicant. The proposed severed parcel being concession 11, part of lot 21, plan 51, part 5, and then the proposed retained parcel being concession 11, part of lot 21, then 51, part 4, which is the existing house at 2686 11th Line East. So they're both parcels, similar in size, .46 acres. Official plan designation is rural and greenlands. Current zoning is special rural residential. Comments were received from Neil Allison, manager of Roads and Urban Services, regarding the potential entrance for the lot. So it's one, it's a situation council has seen before where ownership merges the two lots together, and we're going through this process to give them separate titles again.
Thanks very much. Is the applicant with us tonight?
They're not able to be with us tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does council have any questions on this? Gene, are you trying to join in? You're on mute. Okay.
Are we out?
You're, you're there. Go ahead.
You know that this has been a sore point with me for a lot of these issues like this one, but similarly, I think recently I've heard on the TV or somewhere that there's a plan afoot to bring an end to this foolishness that's going on. Am I on the right track of this, or is it still in the works somewhere?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I believe that the province has introduced an amendment to the planning act that would change the act so that this does not happen as frequently or under common circumstances. So I'd be happy to follow up with some of the local lawyers to see if that is, and given royal assent is in effect. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, just if I could add, Mr. Mayor, before we deal with anything like this, we always send the applicants to a lawyer to make sure that it's necessary.
Thanks very much, Jim. So anyone else have anything on this particular application? Carry on. We're at severance, severance consent application B53-2021 for Eleanor and Gary Bennett at 263 Devil's Value, Devil's Valley, -315 Devil's Valley, concession 4, part of lot 16, concession 4, part of lot 16, former township of Seymour. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as noted, severance consent application B53-2021, Eleanor and Gary Bennett, concession 4, part of lot 16, and concession for 263 Devil's Valley Road and the former township of Seymour. So severance consent application B53-2021 is for technical severance and a lot line adjustment to recreate and reconfigure two separate parcels, which have merged in title under the name of the applicant. The proposed severed parcel is in concession 4, part of lot 16 at 263 Devil's Valley, and it is currently approximately .24 acres with the existing residential dwelling. The application will recreate separate title to the subject property, as well as add an additional .26 acres through a lot line adjustment. The proposed retained parcel being concession 4, part of lot 16, 315 Devil's Valley Road, is approximately 147.74 acres with an existing residential dwelling and outbuilding. The official plan designation is greenlands and prime agricultural lands. Current zoning, rural, residential, environmental protection, environmentally sensitive, and agricultural. This, we've got a couple of different maps to show the overall parcel, and then show the smaller parcel where we're recreating it as a separate description, and also adding on the .26 acres.
Are the Bennett's with us tonight?
Yes, we are.
Anything further to add?
Not really. It's just that we want the property where at 263, we want it separate from the 315 Devil's Valley Road, is both all that we want.
Okay. Is there any questions?
Because it's been merged, why we want, want it separated, so.
Fine, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions from council? Is there anyone joining us on the, in the meeting tonight that would like to comment on this application? Thank you very much. We will carry on. We are now at severance consent application B54-2021 for Lance and Eva Petherick, concession 4, part of lots 24 and 23, plan 38R, 4942, part 1, 229 Skinkle Road, former township of Percy. Jim?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, consent application B54-2021 by Lance and Eva Petherick, concession 4, part of lots 24 and 23. It is on a registered survey plan, survey plan 9 Skinkle Road, in the former township of Percy. And the purpose of the consent, it proposes to create one new parcel, being approximately 12.9 acres of vacant land from approximately 36.7 acres for residential building purposes. The retained portion, being approximately 23.17 acres, contains the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings. Official plan designation is rural, primary and secondary aggregate lands, and current zoning is rural and environmentally sensitive. Comments were received from the allowance and manager of Roads and Urban Services. And this shows the parcel that's proposed for the severance.
Thank you very much. I see that the Pethericks are with us. Anything to add to this application?
Hi there, this evening. Actually, I don't. It's just a future for my wife and I, something future for retirement.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from council on this application? Rick?
Not a question, Mr. Mayor, but just a comment. I went to take a look at this on Sunday and going down Skinkle Road, and we have a bridge that's closed down there, so I had to go around Goucher Road and then Beaver Road and then the other way. I just wanted to mention that to you.
Well, I'll make sure that we get a, get a note out to you, so you recognize the road you're on next time you're traveling down that way. Thank you for that. Is there anyone joining us on the call who would, who would like to comment on his application? Well, thank you very much. We will, we will carry on. We are now at severance consent application B55-2021 for Keith Dusset and Rod McKaisak at 46 Northwoods Drive, 52 Northwoods Drive, concession 11, part of lot 12, concession 11, part of lot 11, former township of Percy. Jim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, has noted a public hearing for severance consent application B55-2021 involving Keith Dusset and Rod McKaisak, and that 46 Northwoods Drive and 52 Northwoods Drive in concession, or sorry, part of part 11 and part of part 12, lot 12, in concession 11, former township of Percy. The application proposes a lot line adjustment, lot addition between two existing properties. Approximately .4 acres of vacant land will be severed from concession 11, part of lot 11, 52 Northwoods Drive. Severed portion will merge to the adjacent lands to the east, being concession 11, part of lot 12, 46 Northwoods Drive, currently .76 acres with an existing residential dwelling and outbuilding. Retained portion of concession 11, part lot 11, 52 Northwoods Drive, will be approximately 19.8 acres with an existing residential dwelling and outbuildings. The official plan designation is greenlands. The current zoning shoreline residential, environmental protection, and environmentally sensitive, at 46 Northwoods Drive, and rural environmental, environmental protection, and environmentally sensitive at 52 Northwoods Drive. environmental protection and environmentally sensitive at 52 Northwoods Drive. And this diagram depicts the lands that are being added to 46 Northwoods Lot Drive.
Thank you very much. I see Mr. Doucette is with us. Do you have anything further to add, sir?
Nothing, Dad. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Are we joined by anyone that has any questions about this application? Seeing none, we will carry on. Thank you. We're now at a minor variance application A02-2021 for Barnaby Marshall, 152 Petherick's Road, -Petherick's Road, concession 3, part of lot 20, plan 38R 4977, part 1, concession 3, part of lot 21, plan 38R 4997, part 2, former township of Seymour. James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, a minor variance application A02-2021 by Barnaby Marshall, 152 Petherick's Road, and then there is a vacant parcel on the opposite side of the road, which you will see when we get that far to the diagram. So the applicant has applied for a minor variance to demolish an old utility shed and construct a new utility shed. The applicant's primary dwelling is located at 152 Petherick's Road. Utility shed is on the other side, on a separate parcel, located directly across. That is part of lot 21, part 2 on plan 38R 4997. Official plan designation is prime agricultural lands, current zoning is agricultural, rural residential, and environmentally sensitive. And you can see from this sketch, from the survey, where the dwelling is located and where the shed is located. So the minor variance asks for an increase in the size of the proposed shed to 10 by
Thank you.
There were no comments received regarding this application. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Marsh with us?
I don't think he is, Mr. Mayor. I don't think he was available.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from council on this? Okay, are we joined by anyone that would like to comment on this application? Thank you very much. We'll carry on. We're now at the proposed purchase of an unopened municipal road allowance, closure and sale for Eli Gedloff and Sarah Davies, 1655 Trent River Road, concession 14, part of lot 13, former township of Percy. James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, as noted, but I'll just correct one thing, it's actually the former township of Seymour. And so there's a road allowance running between concession 15 and 14 through the property in question, and the applicant's own lands on both sides of the road allowance. Took a while to confirm that it was there because it had been closed in other sections. And as you see, comments have been received from the roads manager, which we always do when we're talking about closing a road, but it's just a portion of the road that is within this parcel. It's wooded, it's not used, and so it's just something to clean up a situation.
Thank you very much. I see that Mr. Gedloff is with us. Did I pronounce that fairly close?
You actually got it exactly right, Mr. Mayor, which is unusual, so thank you for that. Thanks for your time and consideration, and I also know that, I believe this is the last application of the night, so I'll spare you any comments and just wish everyone a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Does council have any questions on this one? And I noticed we're not joined by anyone, so there's no one that wished to comment on this application, so I thank you, sir, for that. And with that, we will move to an adjournment. And motion to adjourn moved by Kent Tully and seconded by Rick English. Would you call a question, please, Doug?
Councilor Tully?
Yes.
Councilor Bratney?
Yes.
Councilor English?
Yes.
Councilor Keller, McClellan is absent this evening. Deputy Mayor Metcalf?
Yes.
Councilor Redden?
Yes.
Mayor Crepe?
Yes.
Carried by six, your worship. We are adjourned at 6:34 PM. If you can give me a moment, I will conclude the livestream.